You've got quite a few action items, so whatever you want to do first.
I think we need to stop calling it the Y Cap building though. We're going to confuse people pretty soon.
Yeah, it's two oh nine West Pine. So what do we got first here you want to start with?
Uh, the bids for Y Cap.
Okay, let me get these here when I've got, because I got another one at about nine o'clock last night.
Oh.
For some reason, he forgot to put his um travel and lodging on it. So I actually have copies of all this for you guys and.
That'd be great if you could bring them up.
I do. This has front one is the exterior siding and in the back is windows and I forwarded that to you.
Yeah, I had that.
These are the ones that we currently have, not the new one?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is, this is, the windows is the current one. This is, he just like I say, sent this to me last night. I don't know, do you have an email yet?
Yes.
Cause I put in, what's it under, is under E L N or?
Well, let me, Edgar T. Allen.
That's what the email is for the county?
No, I don't have a county one, so.
I was looking forward for this. This is, like I said, this is one I got, one on top is what I got last night.
Okay.
And the windows and.
Scott, I'll need to get you so that you you know which one, I know that your, uh, your wife sends me stuff so she can give you that.
So, uh, like I say, that's for the siding right there from J. JT remodeling. And then under that is windows from Castle Mountain and I think you saw it, if it's attached to that, windows are about twelve weeks out right now. So before they'll order them, they want some commitment from us that we're going to go ahead with them on that.
So Scott, this gets the outside down. What about the inside?
Inside, um, I've got plumbing or electrical is going to be about eight thousand two hundred.
And who's going to do that?
Price state. I do have bid for them. I just, I didn't get it put in this.
Eight thousand two hundred, what about the floors and painting and? Castle Mountain's still going to do that?
Yeah, because they'll do, they'll do the flooring. And like I said, I don't have, right now I've just got, I've been concentrating on trying to get the exterior ones so we could get going on that. Plumbing, we're probably looking around thirty five hundred dollars to put in a fifty gallon water heater and make sure all, both bathrooms and the kitchen are all properly connected to those.
Thirty five hundred, you said?
Yeah. It's hard to get a plumber is the one we've been using. He doesn't want, you know, he's got so much work in McCall, this is why I drive Cascade. And um, so but anyway, he's willing to come and do it. Like I say, I have, I have the bid from Tri-State for the electrical. I believe painting the interior right now is about nineteen thousand is what we're looking at.
Will that be JJT?
Yeah, he'll probably be doing that once his contracts or the siding is up and done and closed out.
So is your goal then is to rebid that inside painting out or just go with what he's already done in the past? We really need to break this out.
Yeah.
So we're not hitting that fifty thousand dollar trip mark.
Yeah, so um, yeah, because painting would be separate from the, the outside, the contract for that is what it will be.
And we've, I think we've kind of talked about, we're going to use ARPA funds on this?
Um, I'm not sure where you got.
Doug, is that kind of what, do you remember that? Maybe we haven't talked about it.
We haven't talked about that yet?
Um, is how, so what do you feel about using ARPA funds for that? I guess instead of Pilt or, or general fund dollars?
So we're a little over a hundred and two thousand dollars.
That what you got, I was going to.
Hundred and two, hundred and three thousand. I will find, you know, whichever makes sense at the end of the day. A hundred and three thousand going into that building. At the end of the day, I mean, and that structurally, everything is brought current because, you know, I mean, that's more than we had anticipated having to do, but.
No, I thought we were figuring around eighty to a hundred thousand is what we were.
I know we couldn't build it for that.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a sound building. It just needs to be brought up to date. It's, I think it kind of got forgotten over there and neglected.
You know, Scott, how about the insulation in that facility? Have you looked at any of that?
No, I haven't. And there is no air conditioning in it. It's just, just got heating.
Split in there if we put employees in there.
What's that?
We gotta do that if we're going to put employees in there. You gotta put some kind of a split.
What they've done in the past is we have several window units with the new windows. I don't know if that will work, so.
Is that a, that's a oil furnace?
Yep.
And it has ductwork?
Yep, it does.
So we could convert that to air conditioning HVAC propane later on pretty easy if we had to?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's room for it right there and stuff and it does have a crawler under it and everything, so it's a, it can be crawled and duck, you know, and there is existing ductwork right now in there.
And foundation is in good shape.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's got all the IT, which is a big part of it too. Jeremy won't have to do much work.
Well, what we'll have to do is we'll have to locate it. It comes, you can see it on the back of the jail. It comes up from up above, comes down the wall. It went under through the exercise yard and kind of terminated, oh, it would be kind of northeast corner of the building and it served the old building that got tore down.
Not to that building?
Oh, it's not?
No, it's not to that building.
So then that's going to be a cost too?
Yep, so I talked to Jeremy. He came and looked at, we just have to locate that out there and take it into the building. That's what we'll have to do.
Well, personally, I think for a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred or two, whatever, I think that's pretty reasonable. It solves our issue with KWP and having to get out of that by September.
Now, is there a date? Are we, is it our fiscal year, September thirtieth? We're done with them?
I thought, I'd have to go back and look. I thought Mark said by the first of September.
Okay.
Doug, do you remember?
I thought he was going to honor the contract, which is the end of September.
I'm sure there's some play area in there.
Yeah, and stuff, you know, like I say, it's, it's building materials, you know, windows, twelve weeks out, you know, possibly. I don't think the siding and stuff like that's hard to get plumbing, you know, toilets, water heaters, that's not an issue. Windows seem to be the big hiccup and we could, if the two court, you know, contracts are coordinated together, we could, you know, you know, sheet and side it, you know, hold back, you know, from the window areas, even take the windows out so they can get the window wrapped into the spaces. Plastic over the winter, windows once winter goes away and um, and get going with that. And then that would also allow us to, same thing on the inside, we could, you know, paint and stuff and get up to, you know, a foot or two back from the windows once they're installed, um, finished the painting and, and the trim and stuff on that.
And then do the floors last?
Yeah, floors last thing I don't, you know.
And I think that's really your call, getting those guys to work kind of similar when schedule them and all that.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Just a matter of getting it done.
Yeah.
I guess my feeling is I would, I would like to go ahead and, and award both of these contracts today. And then you'll come back with some more solid contracts for the inside painting and floors and give us something on that.
I do have a contract for the electrical. I just, it hasn't been a good morning. Our heater, our boiler went down this weekend sometime and didn't want to fire it back up and.
Boiler gel?
What?
Gel? So it's a good thing we're getting that one updated and fixed.
Yeah, and that's, actually, the electricians are finishing up in the pod right now. I don't know if we want to go on to that yet till we finish.
Yeah, let's just finish this up.
So, yeah, that's.
So do you want a motion?
Yeah, and I think we should pay for this out of ARPA funds.
Okay.
My personal feeling.
Okay.
So I'd entertain a motion.
Chairman, the only concern that I have with that, I apologize for interrupting you. You guys have scheduled that survey regarding to the general public of how the general public feels the commissioner should spend ARPA dollars. I don't know if you want to.
I don't know.
I'm just bringing that to your attention.
I appreciate that, Doug, and I don't think it had anything to do with this. The survey that we had was for Broadband Employee Housing Fairgrounds, County Shop Move. I think those were the kind of some of the options. To me, we have to do this in order to get a facility for extension of four eight year. Otherwise, they're going to be out on the street. And so I would.
I agree with that, but I, I, you know, if we don't need to decide where to pay from right now, maybe we can, I mean, I.
Well, we can wait until we get the bills and then decide then, but that, to me, this is perfect use for ARPA. I don't know how much we have in, in, we have quite a bit in Pilt too, Doug, so you want to wait and make that decision later?
Mr. Chairman, it's ultimately the commissioner's decision, but I would um say that either the Pilt funding or ARPA dollars could be utilized to make an expenditure to update the building in discussion.
We can make that. We may end up paying some of it out of both, both funds, Pilt or this, so we'll just kind of see how it goes. But I think for a hundred and two thousand or a hundred and ten thousand, it's a pretty good deal. So I'd entertain emotionally approve both JJT and the CMH bid that we have in front of us today.
So I have one question before we vote. Scott, when you're working to this, I mean, you're essentially the, you're, you're the general here.
The county county is, we're hiring these.
What were you, when you go into this, you know, you come up with a contract, did you have a budget to work against or is that what, I mean?
Yeah, because you can't really set a budget, you know, especially right now with the, the talk, you know, how volatile building materials are.
Right.
It's kind of, we, we discussed that we were looking to run from eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. We were willing to put that into it.
Yeah.
So that's kind of where we stood. I mean, if this came back at a hundred and seventy-five or a hundred and fifty thousand or something, then we, you know, but we, when we went into this, we had eighty to a hundred thousand dollars in mind.
So somebody gave you a estimated budget approximately that?
Well, we kind of discussed it and that's, you know, it's kind of, you know, as commissioners got to decide what, how much we're willing to spend and that's kind of what we discussed.
So normally this would go through our CIP process and we can prioritize this. You'd have a full budget because of the time sensitivity to this? Or we do have to have this done in time for extension to move over? It's going to have to be an emergency type situation outside the normal process.
So when you get into these, these things like these contracts, I mean, I'm not used to looking at contracts. I don't know thirty, you know, forty thousand dollars is a good deal or not.
Yeah.
You know, so I, you're the guy, you're the contractor.
One, one thing was a fun, you know, with the construction we have up here.
Yeah.
It's hard to find.
I understand.
Anybody. Yeah, and I was at Plumbing House Friday and they, you know, why don't you go back to work? Because they got people constantly pulling into Ferguson. We can't find a plumber. And, uh, and it's the same like this. I've talked to two other contractors, not even, they're not even interested in looking at.
Yeah, from just a county standpoint, I mean, I hate to be at the mercy of both a need here and then um, yeah, maybe a little bit of price gouging or anything like that. And so you, you have to be the person that looks at that's a fair deal and when you come to us.
Yeah.
It's a fair deal.
Yeah.
That's the way I look at it.
Well, that's kind of a limited contract. Is, is it fair to us and to the contractor?
Yeah.
As you know, um, now with the cost, you know, I have a diesel truck and fill that thing up. You know, the, the siding guy's coming out of Meridian, plus he's got to house people up here.
It's.
I, you know, I was kind of balked at his travel and lodging at first, but then looking at what it costs me to run my own personal vehicle.
Right.
And then, you know, um, so I think it's a fair price. And we're, we are kind of at the mercy of, of the availability.
Right now, unfortunately, we're under a time deadline, so.
Yeah, and that's another factor, you know, in on.
Hey, so are you ready to move forward?
And move. Do you want to do the motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the contracts that Scott has given us for this remodel of the Y Cap.
I will second that motion.
Move to second and then I guess one more comment, Scott, is if maybe put an ending date on these contracts, they got to be done by, I don't know, September one or something so that we make sure that this gets done on a timely basis.
But if we, if we've already, if we accept a contract, you're going to have to, they're going to have to know that before they sign this contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is really a bid, it's not.
They have to adjust.
Yeah. Um, the windows are, are a bid. They can, that one can be signed. The other one, I'll have to have Jaime see if he can send me an actual contract to sign.
Yeah, and then let us know if you need help with that. And then we'll figure out if it's going to come out of ARPA or and think, Pilt later on.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we're going down your next action item.
Is that one the request from Pilt? Is that?
Yeah.
What, is this for heaters?
No, this is, these are, these are, well, they are. They're, they're called a split unit, a ductless split. And they do both. They heat and refrigerate is what they do. And with um, we can kind of figuring the, um, the office down there for Sarah. What they've done in the past for heating or for cooling is they stuck a window shaker in there and then blew it in there. And then they put a fan in the hallway and tried to blow it down the hallway to Jeff and Stretch's offices. With her being sat there now, um, they can't put one in there, blow right in the back of her head. So, um, but that being a metal building and the sun, in the summer against, it's just going to roast them out and the offices are not going to be able to work in them and stuff.
So this is three units, one by Mickey's office?
Want to be, yeah, Mickey's, Jeff's and Stretch's.
Okay.
Is what they'll do.
The only thing I want to add or we watch out for is the snow slides off the south side of that roof. We've got to make sure these things don't get wiped off.
Yeah, no, that's been taken into consideration and stuff where the, where they will sit there. Actually sit above the windows, that's what they'll do and um.
I'm familiar with these. These are great systems.
They are. I mean, for, uh, it's kind of been way of the future. Matter of fact, the technology on them is, is changing so quickly. Uh, they're just improving them and uh, they're really.
Going to save us electric costs and everything else. I mean, the way that they were doing it before is probably not the most efficient way to do it, so. That's going to help too, so.
So Scott, we have two bids, one for twelve eight and another one for seven, a little over seven thousand?
Yeah, yeah, the total is nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five, sixty-five thirty-six. So we have to run power. Uh, they have dedicated power to them. We already scoped it out. It'll come out the west end of the building, come around. And uh, we've already checked out the panels. They've got room for the breakers, um, so it'll all, it'll all fly.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion then we approve these two contracts with Cascade Refrigeration and Tri-State Electric for ductless units at the road department.
I'll second.
Who does second? Any more discussion?
I move that we put, including that, that that does come from Pilt funding.
And you want this from Pilt? Hey, we got a motion in second. Award these two contracts funded from Pilt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next one is, oh, wait a minute, that's it, isn't it?
That's it for that.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, we were supposed to start utilities for the trailer today, but the snow kind of shut that down. So Clayton's going to kind of look how the weather behaves the next two days and uh, so we'll get, we're getting started on that. I also have a, um, have some mountain homes, uh, working up a bid to skirt and build us steps on it, so I'm waiting to hear back on that for right now. Um, Warm Lake Transfer Site, someone must have cut our locker chain because uh, Big Mike that drives for Lake Shore lives back in Yellow Pine. He stopped, he says it looks good there, but someone's dropped tires and some metal already. I have signs being made. We're going to put out there, we have the keys made to give to the property owners. Um, we have, it's an American lock, which is really hard to cut. Other than this day and age, you're talking about the fuel, alls you got to do is get a cordless grinder and put a metal cutting wheel and you're.
Don't say that on camera, please.
You're anything, and most of them all know about it. Well, it's, it's a known. It's just, it's.
So Scott, what do you know, or maybe I can research, what the penalty is if you get caught dumping there?
You know, that's something I have to ask the sheriff's department or the, what, what our illegal dumping ordinance is and what kind of teeth it has to it.
I think we need to make it harsh, like ten thousand dollar fine for an illegal dumping, I mean.
And another thing is look at maybe putting like a trail cam or something out there. And hopefully it doesn't get shot or destroyed or something, some, some type of monitoring is so far out there. Um, I said we do, we might have to improve the gate, something that's harder for them to get through. But um, I hopefully have the letter out this week to the sixty-four property owners around the lake. The conditional work, conditional use permit from the Forest Services, they are the only ones that are allowed to use that, just flat out, that's. No lodges, no commercials, no excavators, no hunters, fishermen, recreationalist. Only those sixty-four are supposed to utilize that spot and then it's only for their household. Solid waste bathrooms and kitchens and their yard debris. It's not for them to clear their lots or improve their lots or anything else.
Mattresses.
Anything, if they have, they've got furniture or anything else, then they're just like everybody else, it's got to go appliances. It's got to go to Spinks Lane and um, I have signage, big sign that we're going to put out there right at the gate, you know, with this information on it. It's just going to be how we're going to secure that gate for their use, so.
So in general, Scott, you talk about people tearing stuff up or illegal dumping and that kind of thing. What you, is there kind of like a homeowner group there that kind of you work with? You've got some sort of a connection there that maybe?
No, I really don't. I think actually I need to ask Dave because I thought he said there is a homeowners association or something out there, but um, that's kind of the problem with Warm Lake site because we have the same setup at Yellow Pine. At least the Yellow Pine community has, takes an interest in it.
Right.
And they try to maintain it.
Kind of where, yeah.
Yeah, but we don't seem to get that same type of participation from the Warm Lake community.
Because it's like you mentioned there, putting the gates up, it's a little harder to get through, just becomes more expensive destruction.
Yep.
In a lot of those cases.
Yep.
And uh, so it seems like that we need some sort of a, uh, maybe a team building effort going on there with the Warm Lake to kind of, because I'm kind of assuming that maybe they in large approve of this or work with us, you know, to some extent, so.
The bottom line is in the Forest Services flat out, because we've got to do some, there's been block, brick, um, other stuff dumped out there. We have this, I'm at the higher granite or somewhere, some hauling company to go out and haul that and take it to our Spinks site because they said it's got to go. And they're, they're pretty.
And this is on the Forest Service contract?
Yeah, this, they're pretty clear. If it continues to be abused and they're going to do away with the public use permit and it'll be permanently closed.
So we need to somehow establish some community relationship there to kind of help us out a little bit with that, it sounds like.
And it's, it's hard to monitor. I mean, it's, it's hard for law enforcement or anybody to catch somebody in the act.
Absolutely, yeah, it's a.
About the only thing we can do is sometimes we've gone, you know, out there and they throw out trash, you know, it's got their name and address on it. But then, who said they did it, you know, or, I mean, their trash ended up there, I guess ultimately they're responsible for it, but um.
I think honestly, Scott, I think that decision is going to be made by the Forest Service for us. I was going to, wondering your letter you're sending to the Warm Lake landowners. Have you written that yet?
No, that's, I'm trying to.
So you might include something in that that, hey, if this situation isn't improved, you can't step up and help us maintain this site. Then we will lose the conditions for men and it will be closed and you'll have to haul your trash.
We do, we do need corporation in all those areas in that piece.
And the sign we're putting up at the gate says that. Continue abuse of this site will in, in permanent closure. So.
So we can do, and if the Forest Service pulls the permit, we're done? Okay.
Okay, um, floors were done this weekend. Unfortunately, it lifted the glue on the carpet up in the EOC. So I got to contact them as soon as I get down here, send them forward pictures taken to me.
Well, they're using some serious cleaners if it's eating the glue up.
Yeah.
And the new section of it or the old section?
No, they weren't allowed in, in dispatch. They're going to take care of them. They're winging there. But um, yeah, in the, in the classroom side, I mean, it's.
Is it our chemicals or theirs?
It's theirs. See, they're providing everything, so. And I haven't heard from this building, but um, uh, God, I just lost her name, Kapiri. Um, she has, she's telling me that.
Kelly.
Kelly, thank you. Um, the fumes were terrible up there and that her dispatcher had migraine after. But I didn't notice it there, but anyway, so yeah, I got to get ahold of them, talk to them about that. Uh, it's been a typical Monday, so.
Well, they're, they're licensed abundant, I'm assuming in church, so they're in church.
So I'm going to forward, um, Captain Stanbauer sent me pictures of it. I'm forwarding those to Angie there at KBS and stuff. Say the pod right now, we're uh, point, one thing we really got to get moved there actually is to have the switches up there. When he, when Jeremy's talking about the phones, they can shut the phones off in the individual pods. And uh, so we just got to get that moved. We, we mounted a box on the wall. We moved the pole station for the fire, our generator, enunciator. And our two switches for the heat tapes on the roof and we're moving that box to it. So we're just about ready to start tearing it out. We're at, it was on the pod. They are, like I say, Rose Advocates, carpets are being cleaned as ice coming over here.
You're a rock star.
So um, it should be available here next couple of days.
So then we need to let Pat know that. You do that, sure.
I got a request from, I believe her name's Crystal. She's the code enforcement from McCall Police Department. Last year, we let them put dumpsters over on our old site during free dump, our free dump days. And she requested to do that again if they could, and they'll, they'll maintain them and keep track of them. And uh, like I said, we did it last year.
You're talking about at the annex?
The old annex, yeah, in McCall.
Okay.
Across, across the road west there where we used to have the recycle center. They um, and I understand from her email that they remove them each night. Um, I'm not quite sure why we're having free dump days, why they're, why they're having one too, but anyway, they did it last year. So she requested permission to do that again this year.
I thought it was all at the same time.
What?
I thought it was all done on the same day.
Well, it is, is that's, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite understanding why we have free dump days, why they're having one there because it's running two, two days. As the, in, you know, same as ours are going, so, but. But um, yeah, let's see, where we at? It looks like I found um, a recycler for our electronics here too.
Oh, excellent.
And stuff. Um, it may cost us, it may not be free. But uh, anyway, they're, they're willing to come get it. I need to talk with Jeremy. We need to kind of get, they would like an inventory list of what all we have. And possibly even the stuff that's out in the um, shed behind Rose Advocates, get the little electronics out of there.
And Jeff, do you have any old electronics now? Road Department needs to go? Little stuff. So we need to make sure when that happens, all this. Okay.
So I think that's all I can think of for right now.
Um, the boiler on the jail that's running now, I'm assuming you got.
It's back up and going, yep.
And then you got the backup, you've got the concrete pad poured.
Pads poured. Um, Eric Kyle was supposed to be up last week to get fittings. He lost his fittings list, but um, didn't make it, um, so.
So hopefully this week that'll get hooked up and.
Oh, no.
No?
No.
Because they got to get a crane and lift that up.
We have to crane it in there, yeah, and it's going to be, it's really in the most, in the hardest place to work on it. Because it's a victolic pipe, so it has to be grooved and, you know, probably have to do it outside and those pieces have to be taken in. It's probably going to drive Port Debbie crazy letting people in and out over there, but um, uh, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a one day deal by any means.
Something they did away with the victolic pipe years ago went to different, they still have that stuff.
Yeah, I've done tons of victolic pipes over the years.
That stuff, not friendly to work with.
No, it's pretty labor intensive. It's nasty, the soap on it and it's not really ideal for heating because when you shut the heating off in, in the summer, the, the gasket shrink and they start leaking. Um, it's, it's not an ideal way to do things, but it's, you know, it's the process, I guess, worse than trying to do it all welded and the, the size of the pipe's too big to do threaded, so it's, you know, it's still. And they've come up with better gaskets and better. And they've come up with better gaskets, some better clamps and stuff too, you know, and stuff, so. So I think that's it, if you, unless you have any more questions for me.
Right now.
Okay, so it almost seems like I, we need to, I need to have a walk around day with you so I can figure out what you do.
What I do? I don't know what I, I don't know what I do. Each day kinda determines what I do.
You got a lot of things going on.
So, anyway.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Jeff, we're running late, sorry guys, but we're gonna get her done today, come on up.
Yeah.
The best things we've done.
You've got quite a few action items, whichever one you wanna do first.
Well, I think we can save on three of these action items.
Okay.
For the weed department, um, they went in front of Oki and he's telling us to put the brakes on. We gotta go back and do some work on these.
So we're gonna do contract work on those bottom three?
Yes.
Okay.
Make sure I'm saying that right. Yep, so myself, Steve and Oki will sit down and. Figure out what we need to do to these to get them up to standard. That was easy enough, Steve, see ya.
But we could, we could go ahead and do the trailer and.
He's got, he's got other updates too. Um, so yeah, the request to, for the forty-five hundred dollars for pilt funding. We started going through all the trailers, the same thing bid us last year.
I said, didn't we just do this?
Yes, we did, and the same reason, we got the mechanics going through them and one of them is just garbage. The axle's bent, which we didn't catch last year at budget time. Um.
Can we just put another axle under it and not have to buy the whole trailer?
It's harder to find an axle than it is to find a trailer.
Is it really? There's that trailer place down in Garden City that I buy all my brakes and trailer axles from, but you guys know better than I do.
So a lot of it is the trailer that's got the bent axle, metal's just basically rotting off of it. It's way undersized for these big Kubotas that they're hauling around now. Um, so we need to upgrade. This should do it.
So it's not just an axle, we need, you need a bigger trailer.
Yes, we need a bigger trailer. I mean, even our smaller fifty inch side by sides that we use for spraying the fifty inch trails on the Forest Service. Those are too heavy for this trailer and that's what they've been hauling on it. And yeah, going down a smooth road, you're probably fine, but the first bump you hit, you just doubled your load on that axle, so. We, it's, I've talked to the mechanics about it and it, that whole trailer just needs to go away to scrap. There's not much left of it, it's been welded on, it's been patched on, it's been mesh decking on, it's just, it needs to go away.
Okay, so I'd entertain motion then to approve this request of forty-five hundred dollars out of pelt to buy a new trailer for the weed department.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks for the air conditioning also. I was panicked.
Uh, rock crushing.
Got them right here, we got two of them.
Remind me what's in your budget, seven hundred and fifty?
About six hundred. I was trying to go through it really quick this morning to double check my numbers, but I have a feeling with the cost of everything. Yeah, we're gonna be doing some adjusting.
So we, I thought one time we had two hundred and seventy for rock crushing, we bumped that up to six hundred.
So I had.
I don't know, I just.
I had two point seven million in my, Doug and myself decided to put everything contract in one line item.
Okay.
Rock crushing, paving, everything in one line item, we had two point seven million. So we took out six hundred thousand for paving Old State Highway. Hundred and ninety-five thousand for paving West Lake Fort. So we're, I'm, I'm gonna be moving some stuff around, but yeah, my number is six hundred.
We just did R F Ps for.
Right.
Whatever it was.
For all those other roads we're gonna pave. Okay, well, you're, it's your budget, you're in charge of it.
Probably see what these numbers come through at first.
Okay, the first one is from Premier LLC doing business as Premier Aggregates. And. Thirty thousand, I'm trying to figure out here. Thirty thousand tons of three quarter, twenty thousand tons of four inch minus.
Hold on one second, thirty thousand tons of three quarter.
Mm-hmm. Twenty thousand tons of four inch minus and then mobilization. The total bid is two hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred. I wanna make sure that that's for all of it, it looks like it is.
What was your request on this, Jeff? How many tons did you want crushed?
That number.
Thirty thousand?
Yep, thirty thousand.
So the contractors, the contracts are the same as falling.
Yep, they're all bidding on the same exact thing.
That's good news.
Okay, and then the next one is from, it's like Western Construction.
Yep.
Yeah, Western Construction, thirty thousand tons, same thing, three quarter, four inch, and that bid is four hundred and ninety-five thousand. Even, four hundred and ninety-five thousand. Is that Bob?
Western?
Yeah, Western.
I don't know if Bob's still there or not.
Did you say four ninety-five?
Yeah, four hundred and ninety-five.
Wow.
You wanna look at these to find out why they're so different?
Yeah, what, what was the first one? Two something, wasn't it?
First one was two seventy-two, five hundred. Second one is four hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Why are they so different, Joe?
You're barking up the wrong tree.
Uh, the mobilization on the first one was twenty-five thousand and the mobilization on the second one was seventy thousand.
Well, the second one, oh, okay.
I guess my question is, why would we take the big one if we can take the small one?
We don't, but we gotta make sure they're apples to apples.
Yeah, right.
They look like they're apples to apples.
I talked to both of them on the phone days prior to the, when they had to have them in, they asked, asked me all the questions and. I really thought Western would probably come in lower because they're gonna be in the state pit right there crushing for the highway project down here in Round Valley this year, but.
Sounds like they don't want it.
I mean, that, that's closer to the number what I had in my head.
Well, even their twenty, the four inch minus is double what the first bid was. Everything is double, pretty much.
Everything's doubled.
So, yeah.
If you, if you don't see any reason to take the, not take us, the lower bid, it makes no sense to, it's done deal.
This kinda puts the bug in my ear that I need to keep close track of them. I will probably have to go up and pull samples once a week off the belt, send them, send them down to Boise and have them tested to make sure it's what I ordered.
Yeah.
Have you um, dealt with Premier before?
Nope, I haven't dealt with Western Construction either on the rock crushing side of the world, so.
Haven't, okay.
So you looked at their reputation, this, they're.
It's.
Yep.
Yeah.
So under that, it would be interesting to see if they wanna do more, since you have more in your budget.
That's, that's exactly, this, this could almost double the amount of what.
You might be able to amend it.
But, but according to the contract, I can only plus or minus twenty-five percent, I think, unless they agree more.
Well, unless anybody else has a reason for not approving the lower bid, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the lower of those two bids. Premier, is that right?
Premier LLC.
LLC.
Premier Aggregates.
I'll second that.
Moved in second, in all in favor, please say aye.
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 With the recommendation, we try and increase the amount that they are.
Yeah, yeah, once, once they get going, I'll, if they're up for doing enough.
You do a formal amendment to the contract if they are willing to do it.
Right, and as Oki's pointing out, I've never had contracts before. We've always worked right off of the bid. He's, he's helping me.
Yeah, I would. Cross that out, cross that out.
We have a couple of questions for you after you're done. Are you done with your stuff?
And today is.
Oh, no, I got a couple more things. Um, Smiley Road, y'all got my email. Not much we can do with it, it's a country road that half of it's been rebuilt, half of it hasn't, it's.
Is that on your plan for the next five years to do anything with even?
Not really. I, I know Black Hawk years ago, back when Gordon or Jerry was in, he talked about going all the way to the highway with it.
So that is a recommendation that I would have moving forward. We just approved that Black Hawk out there. They're very likely to use that road, that should have been on the list of things that we required from them.
Yep.
So unfortunately, it's not.
So we are, I told them about our C I P stuff we're working on. We were, we're, me and Oki and Sendus sat down last week. We're going to start again implementing the two thousand and seven C I Ps. So that was all engineered, um, it's all that stuff right there. All those C I Ps have a certain dollar amount per lot. That the developer pays the county before anything gets through. That is going to be in my.
So that's road agreements.
Yep, and that's gonna be in my comments from here on out.
So what do we tell the people at Smiley Lane? I mean, Jeff, what do you, you know?
You know, a lot of it is, like I said in the email, um, granite excavation is one of the, I'm not gonna say a destroyer, but.
Well, it's an impact.
They're hauling eighty-six thousand plus on that road, fifty trips a day probably. It, he, they helped us last year by supplying a water truck. It used to be a road we'd have to do two or three times a year. So one week after we do it, it's garbage.
So I guess before, I wouldn't respond to that. I would like your recommendation on what the county should be doing there, if we should be doing anything to that road. It's a minor collector, or is it just a?
It's becoming more, more of a collector, isn't it?
It's just a, I guess it'd be considered a minor collector, cause it gathers Nusula, Norwood, the house is on Smiley. Some of the properties out there along West Mountain.
So with the new impact of the Black Hawk sub, you know, I'd like your recommendation on what is that going to do? What would be your recommendation to us? I mean, yes, there's a lot of people in this county that live under roads. Unfortunately, a lot of them don't have a gravel pit right above it.
Right.
And so I feel like there is some responsibility for not putting those impacts on that new subdivision and that gravel pit. So, I don't know, you guys have thoughts on that, but.
Have you talked to Josh about maybe helping gravel some of this road?
And I'm wondering too.
Most of it wouldn't.
Wouldn't stick.
It, it, it needs a full rebuild.
We're talking base material, everything?
We're talking fabric, base, ditches, culverts, and it's.
So maybe what we need to do is think about putting this on a schedule for next year or the following year, as soon as we can get it, just start down that process.
We've done bits and pieces through the twenty years I've been here, piece here, a piece there. It's just, some of it's got good base under it, some of it doesn't.
What's the potential for grant funding?
Where it's not a major collector.
So this is my thought, Jeff, is that we have very limited river crossings and lake crossings, that's one of them. So we're gonna have to figure out what that looks like in this master plan that we're gonna be devising and working on. That is a lake, you know, I mean, it's a river crossing, we have very few of those.
Right.
We are gonna have to prioritize some of that. I'm hoping that LTAC would see that. I mean, the county really has very limited opportunities for that.
Right.
I think we need Mary to work on it and see what she could do. I think for this summer, unfortunately, these individuals, you know, I don't know if we can oil it or water it or what we can do, but I would ask Josh also.
I think, I think that you've raised a legitimate question here, is, yes, they, they are being impacted. We, we had a gravel, as you, some of you other, others of you remember, but we had, uh, Knife Forever came to us for um, a C U P to work, to do asphalt plant over there a few years ago. We denied it. And we denied it primarily on just the very stuff that you're talking about here, because of the impact. That it was going to have on the West Mountain and other feeder deals, it is just not practical to put that out here. Because they were, I think if I understand it, remember right, that's a kind of a high, high grade uh, rock. And they can do state uh, contracts. So they were, you know, and now, and I asked that question at that time. I said, okay, now we did, we didn't, we're not giving you a gra- a permit here, or you just, is it just gonna be a, a different way now to transport that stuff? You know, like they were asking them, next one they wanted a permit up here just south of Donnelian, that would be fifty-five. And I said, well, does that mean that now they just took the gravel out of there and impacted it the same way? In fact, they couldn't give me an answer at that point, of course, that ultimately got denied there as well. But now, the same, same issue, the gravel's going to come out.
But, heavy trucks coming out.
We're going right back to the deal, yeah. So they do deserve, in my opinion, uh, a, a response from us to kinda mitigate some of that impact. And uh, maybe for the short term, we need to do something like maybe work, work with the watering issue and uh, maybe. An extra grading thing, some mitigation there for that.
Dust abatement.
Long term, probably, as Sherry's mentioned, that probably, we have to look at that, it's changing that road, I mean, that's.
And once again, that whole road is easement.
Yeah, Big Boy don't have the right of way.
We have no right of way on that.
It's no right of way, so we're gonna look at, there's gonna be a fund there, we're gonna have to buy that right of way.
To go over B O R ground?
Yeah.
No.
So it's all private property?
There might be a little chunk down there right along the river, but most of it's through private property.
Yeah.
Betis.
What's our easement?
Betis is probably the big one, Purdom's, um.
And Purdom is doing a development out there, I think.
He's doing a little three, three parcel one out on Nusula.
Yeah, oh, on Nusula.
Maybe we could talk to him, oh, his is on Nusula though.
Yeah, so I would get, figure out how much right of way, what we're looking at.
So, so short term, I, I, I can put dust abatement down, it probably, I don't know, probably be.
That'd be my suggestion, at least we have to deal with it, you know.
And again, right of way is what it is. I mean, if we don't purchase right of way, we can still do work within the right of way we have.
Yep.
We could, it goes far as paving, just like Rogers and a lot of those others, right? You know, but be ideal to have right of way.
That would be, well, with all the heavy haul trucks on it.
Right.
In my opinion, it would be better to leave it gravel, because you can see what they've done to Good Lane. We paved that.
Right.
Ten, twelve years ago and it's already just.
I'm thinking more like Harrick or Sixty Lane, how we did down there with the basin.
That's what it needs to happen. It, it needs to be, it, right now, the road's the same level as the fields.
You need, you need fill, you need to get that brought up to grade.
At least two feet above the fields, get drainage. And I just had a culvert fail right off the highway Friday, so I gotta dig that up and replace it when East Lake Fort. Water levels drop far enough. We got it opened back up, we just done a little repair on it, just to get the road open back up to this morning.
Jeff, are you in a position this summer to kinda at least mitigate uh, that impact from the dust and um.
Yeah, I'll, roll some money from somewhere.
Grading, maybe a little extra.
Well, if we grade it and get a little bit extra stabilizer on it, it'd probably hold up. That, that'll be the cheapest way to do it.
Yeah.
At least for this year until we get a master plan done.
Sure you get something, when, long, long, the long game is to get a better road.
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
And honestly, Josh is probably getting beat to death too with his trucks, if that's.
Well, that's why he calls me, is because his trucks are getting beat to a pulp and that's why I threw it back on him last year and. He said, how about if I help by throwing a water truck at you? And it was in August, he's like, yeah, can't get enough water in August.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
One more thing.
Sendus wants to respond.
I would continue to try to get corporation from the heavy impacters.
Right.
So do you want something you want to add to that?
I do want to just say that um, there is a condition on the new reserve of Black Hawk. That requires them to work with the Road Department and the Board of County Commissioners on a road development agreement.
Okay.
Putting that on all those subdivisions. So we haven't gotten to that point, they haven't started work yet. I think that's a great conversation to have. So just to your comfort level, they haven't even started anything and they do have to work with us.
I, I feel like we need to really start thinking about the traffic flow in the county, how that works. Get some people off fifty-five. I mean, if you're coming off West Mountain, you're gonna find a path across that lake and across the river. And those are the roads that we need to start improving. So our traffic, transportation plan needs to look at the traffic flow and how we can move some of it. So our traffic, transportation plan needs to look at the traffic flow and how we can move some of it off fifty-five. Yeah, we're working on that, so. Perfect. And a hundred and thirty-five lots, that's gonna impact that road tremendously.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a couple other little subdivisions out there that have the same requirement on them. And if there's anything that we can get easement on, you know, on those subdivisions, that's what we need to be working on. Hundred feet on West Mountain. Perfect.
Oh, great. Good, good. Yeah. Hey, we gotta move along. Jeff, what's your last item?
One more thing, uh, Smith Ferry Drive. Again, for the last summer. Uh, I forward you Darrell Ellis's requests, complaints, whatever. While the road's open. While it's closed, no big deal. It's closed for those four hours. Deputies will be, well, deputies won't be down there, but they'll have flaggers. Barricades are already delivered to both ends. You move them in, two o'clock, you move them back out. I, I don't know why we need to do anything to Smith Ferry Drive besides blade it. I mean, Darrell's wanting dust abatement and everything else put down. Well, if the highway's open, we can't stop people from using that road.
Nope.
I mean, you either close the road permanently, or it's a county road that you can take at your own risk.
We can't.
I mean, that's, it, so it's a county road that you take at your own risk, just like multiple other county roads that we have.
So Darrell, I think Darrell's dad is the one that got that little section, little intersection paved way back when they, they milled the whole canyon. And I think he complained enough or his dad did or something to where the state hauled, milled asphalt out there, put it six, four to six inches thick all around his house because there was people going over the top.
Is that all gone now?
No, no, it's still there.
It's still there.
It's got potholes in it. We keep patching. I, I don't know if there's. If we're liable for. The highway's open. I don't know why anybody would wanna go over the top and wait in line for fifteen minutes.
Yeah, that's good. You're not really saving much.
No, you're, no.
Jeff, do you know, is there any logging gonna go on down in Sage Hen and Packer John again this year?
I have not heard. There's a good chance there'll probably be some up Packer John.
Some more again?
My guess. I haven't heard from anybody yet. Only one I know of is gonna happen over here off of West Mountain.
In my opinion, that's a very low priority road for Valley County. I mean, we've got so much need where there's a lot more. Road movement than that.
We just keep going the way we are.
Jeff, a couple things that came up earlier. Annette's, um, their car had a flat tire on Friday.
Had taken care of.
Okay, so what would be the protocol moving forward for anyone using the motor pool if they have car issues on Friday? I would like to see a policy around that.
Email it. You mail us.
I'd like to see a policy around that.
I didn't recognize the phone number, so I didn't answer my phone Friday.
I think we need a policy on that, something that we can.
I'm off on Friday, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna weigh in on this and just from a standpoint, just from a worker here in the sense, I mean, you, you know, it just seems like, Jeff, that there ought to be a process where if you, if you have an auto issue, that you get it fixed. I mean, you have authority to drive that vehicle, so if you have a flat tire, you get it fixed, keep a receipt. And then, and get it paid for. I mean, I don't.
Do that, or, I mean, there was no reason. They got the spare put on.
Yeah, there's no sense and no reason to take, if I'm a government employee and I drive to Yelp and have a flat, well, you just take whatever mean method or system process that's available, get it fixed. Keep a receipt and bring it in and get paid for it, right?
Yeah, but if you're in yellow, I mean, there's no, if you got the spare on there, there's no reason to even take it somewhere.
So the people, I mean, here in these different departments.
Me, and I've never changed a tire. I don't plan on doing that. Sorry.
People in the different departments, I mean, they, they shouldn't be worried about having to get ahold of Jeff on Friday or any other day if that doesn't make sense.
So we had, so put the flat tires aside. That is a simple operator gets out, puts the spare on and goes, takes it back to the.
I'm sorry, but that's not simple. I am not going to change a tire if I'm driving a county vehicle on Friday. I'm not.
Yeah, well, get a, get a filling station or triple A or whatever.
We, we worked on, I think Doug was involved in it a couple of years ago. Skip brought it up. Oh, just kind of beat, what if they're in Cordelia at a conference, the car breaks down. Not a flat tire, but the car breaks down.
Get it fixed, you know?
Get ahold of us and get it fixed. And if it's gonna take more than a day, a couple days, county, I can't remember, Doug, you might have to help me through this, but we were gonna pay for a hotel if it's just gonna be a couple days.
Is it writing?
But I guess commissioners and Jeff, I think that needs to be a decision made by the road department, or in my opinion. Um, and not the employee who's driving the vehicle. Um, the road department is authorized, or is, I, I don't wanna use the word, but I'm gonna use it mandated um, to oversee the use of the motor pool vehicles. If a vehicle breaks down, let's, let's just take out the, uh, the, um, flat tire issue, but if a vehicle breaks down, instead of, unless we, uh, procedures have changed, the road department should be making the decision that an outside private company come and pick up the vehicle and transport it to, uh, um, a mechanic to be fixed. Or are you now saying that an employee should just take that upon themselves?
No, they, they still need to let me know.
So the question is, is there an on-call individual, or what, I think what the commissioners are asking, a formal process to be developed for notification of the road department? If I'm incorrect, please correct.
I mean, there's, there's weekends where there's nobody even around.
Right.
I'm fishing, my mechanic's snowmobiling or camping, or sometimes there's nobody around.
So you don't have an on-call person at all?
Not in the summer. Not in the summer. Wintertime, we're always here. Summertime, just like we were talking, if, if I put somebody on call, I gotta pay them.
Yeah. So that, we ought to have access, you, through your organization, you should make it clear to them that this is, here are some routes that you can take. I mean, you know, we don't, I don't have to be available every time.
Yeah, wrecks are one thing. I mean, we'd have to go back and, we added something to that vehicle use policy last year.
I agree, we did.
But I can't remember what it was.
It's notifying you first, and you make the decision on what you want done.
Right.
And so in that scenario, if no one's available, then you need a backup plan. You need to let them know it's okay to go do this, and they're gonna be reimbursed without breaking.
But the problem is, major car repairs, anything's major anymore. With parts and pieces nowadays, it'd be better for somebody to rent a car and drive home and leave the car there and we'll go back and get it four weeks later.
But that just can be part of your process.
That is part of the policy. Yeah.
And go for it. Two things I know, we've told them, had them towed back to the county shop when they broke down. And fixed them here, and then the employee figured out a way to get home. I think you could also do some classes to teach people how to change a flat tire.
I'm not doing it.
Sherry, Sherry won't do it. So just, just to give you a scenario here, our, our new Jeep, Skip has one, the other one's in motor pool. They don't have spare tires.
Yeah.
You open up the back deal, there's an air compressor and a plug kit.
And that's it, huh?
That's it.
Well, you give me one of those and I'll use that.
And that new car of yours probably doesn't have a spare in it either.
It does.
Unless it's a Crosstrek or something, but.
It does. The other thing that we need to find out on, so our road standards hasn't ever been completed, A, B, C, D, E. We need to get that completed.
I just came across that when I was cleaning my desk off here a couple of months ago. Brian sent me a draft, I guess, of.
Do we have any? Okay, anything else? We gotta move on. We're running out of time.
Nope.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Jeff.
Quick update. Can I just get?
Yep.
Couple minutes real quick, since how we're putting our contracts on hold. I don't know if you got the email, but we, we're putting together a, a training seminar for the weed department. And, and it just kind of blown up. Now, I, right now, I have over fifty people who signed up to attend this training. Um, we at first had it at the EOC, but we're over capacity, so now we're having to move it to the American Legion Hall. So, I mean, and right now, we haven't even put it out to the public yet. This is just. Forest Service, Department of Lands, different counties. So, yeah, it's turned into a, a pretty big, pretty big deal for us. And, but I want, uh, probably open it up for the public as well, because we have, we have room for twenty more people probably. So I just wanted to bring you up on that. And I did bring copy, I don't know if you got a copy of my email, but I did have a copy of the, the training classes and the bio on the speakers. And I would like to invite the commissioners to come join us on the, on the seminar.
What day is that, Steve?
It's May twelfth. Uh, it's pretty much all day. Um, I kinda got a little bit extended on myself. I've tried to get as many credits as I could get for private and professional applicators, and we qualify for seven credits. So it's gonna be a tight, it's gonna, we've got lots of speakers, a lot of really good topics.
So can I pick up my, my spray when I'm there?
No.
That's a little early.
You're having it at the Legion?
Yes, the Legion.
It starts when?
May twelfth.
What day? I mean, time of day?
Um, well, it's all day, starts at, uh, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
And we'll, hopefully, we'll end up at, uh, three thirty. Yeah, it's gonna be. And really, it's, it was, turned up a kind of expensive for us, but then we did the numbers. It actually was cheaper than sending our crews down to Boise to do the training down there, so we're gonna start doing them all up here. And then offer it to other people as well, too, so. And there's some really good topics.
It sounded like you're getting a lot of, uh, public cooperation as well with this, Steve, which is a really a positive thing, so.
Yeah, we got quite a few. And right now, just in word of mouth, and we probably have, oh, six or eight private ranchers attended. Um, but I'm gonna put it out for everybody. And, you know, we got capacity for a hundred. I got enough stickers for seventy. So we still got room for more people to, private or professional applicators too.
So, yeah, there's, it's more, there's more to this, I'm, I'm assuming. There's also, there's other ways to kill weeds other than just chemicals.
There is, yes.
So it's a broad-based.
Yep.
Process for dealing with the weed issue.
Right.
And the reason I ask that, I know there's sensitivity to chemicals, so.
Correct, yeah.
This offers some options as well.
Well, we have one speaker from the Nest First Bio Control coming up. And we're talking, because we do a lot of bio control insects around the county.
Yeah, good.
He's one of our main speakers. And then Weed ID, and there's a lot, yeah, a lot of good topics. If you want, I can send that, send that to you so you can see the, the whole outline of it.
Yeah.
Real quick, where are you on the employees? Are you full yet?
No, sir. Um, we hired two full-time last year with the, the road and bridge. So we still have openings for two seasonal employees. So we're about, well, fifty percent.
Fifty percent. We gotta get you some help there.
Yes.
Put the word out.
Yeah, we've been trying. Pat's been working on it since, well, first of March, and we've had one applicant. But, uh, once I explained the position, she wasn't interested anymore.
Steve, the question came up earlier this morning, if you don't mind. You know, I realize this employee, employee thing is probably your biggest hurdle. And, and dealing with weeds because of this, uh, the time that you really need to be focusing on it. Have you looked, or do you have a feeling for the possibility of maybe doing some of this contract? You know, as opposed to trying to do your, everything in-house?
There's no private contractors around. Mike Wallace did some in McCall, but, uh, he's retiring. In fact, his business is up for sale. He's not even gonna do it this year. So we used to have people we brought in from Adams County, but there is nobody to. There's, well, I mean, there's one person, that's Branch Enterprises. But he's at a Nissia.
So have you explored the valley area?
Well, what I do is, is all we do as the county is mostly the, the road right of ways. So any private place or contractors, I instruct the homeowners to contact him.
Okay.
And then if he could bring his crews up, and so he's got quite a few contracts up here. I think he's got more work than what that one company can do, but.
You can never retire. Right? Jeff, you better be thinking about the future.
But, I don't know, there's opportunities. If we had somebody, there's a lot of work for, um, private applicants.
Huge issue, and no one's addressing it.
Huge issue.
Yeah, it's, um.
It's just, uh, it's expensive to get the equipment and the insurance and it's, and it's feast or famine, too. You know, more work than what you can handle in the two months, and then what do you do for the rest of the year?
Yeah, you have to, that's why I brought that up a little bit too. You know, you've got this window that you can kill weeds. I mean, you can't, it's not a year-round job.
Four months.
Yeah, and, um.
We tried to work with the Master Gardener program. And that did work a year or two, didn't it? But not really.
Not really.
No, it's.
We had one person, but then, yeah, they, they moved on.
Yeah. But an effective contract, even though, now you're talking about being expensive, but an effective contract is probably still less expensive than several years of ineffective, you know, spread out, so you, you know, kinda.
Well, that's, what I suggest, that the landowners come in and talk to us at the weed department and get them on a good, a good program.
Yeah.
Problem is, we, they use the same chemicals year after year, and then they build up a resistance. Every few years, you gotta change things up. But the biggest problem is laps and absentee landowners. So, you know, getting in and sending out enforcement letters, that's where I, I won't say I dropped the ball because it's because of lack of staffing. So this year, we got a, one crew. Hopefully, I'll be able to get out more and do more of the enforcement letters. We still send out half a dozen every year, but, uh, it's, it's never enough.
You haven't any success with enforcement that way?
Yeah, we have, um, ninety percent of everybody, they're real, once, most of them don't even know they have an issue with weeds. Or they've never seen the property, they've inherited it. And that's, that's the biggest issue. And then finding, them finding a contractor to do it. Because we don't wanna compete with the private sector, but there is no private sector anymore.
Yeah, it's a.
And we don't have the, the staffing to, to go out there and spread. We have the ability with the state statutes, but we just don't have the crew.
Well, we sympathize with your problem, and I hope that we can be of some help as time goes on.
I hope so.
Okay, thanks, you guys.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Candice, if you don't mind, we're gonna run into charity after lunch. We're kinda jammed up for time. We're gonna go on down, and we'll let you know probably right after lunch, one o'clock. Maybe one fifteen after the service awards, okay? Thanks. We're going down our commissioner agenda. We've got the meeting minutes of April fourth. Everybody good with those? And entertain a motion to approve those?
I'm going to approve the meeting minutes of April fourth.
I'll second it.
Good to say, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then our next agenda item is an action item. This is a letter of support for Cascade Medical. Tom, come on up. We've got, we had two different letters. I kinda liked the second one. I wanted your opinion on that. Um, have you seen them?
I have.
Probably wrote them.
Yes.
I like the second one better, just a little more ex, self-explanatory.
Okay.
Uh, whatever these guys wanna do on that. This is a letter of support for Cascade Medical Centers. Uh, revenue drives to build a new facility. Take you, take a second, look at them, see what you think.
I don't have them in front of me, but.
I don't either. I'm trying to find them here. Where are they?
They're in the packet with Gabby that she sent out Thursday.
Okay, final commission, I forgot, okay, see, that's.
It's called sample endorsement.
Sample endorsement.
Commissioners, do you need me to resend it?
I've got it. I don't mind.
Find it in?
It's in the packet.
Not yet.
Kind of feedback are you getting? Good?
Yeah, excellent feedback. Uh, you know, pleased to see, uh, letters to the editor. Uh, there was a recent letter to the editor that was actually, uh, not favorable towards the bond, but he did a very good job of articulating his concern, and it was the politest, uh, anti-op-ed that I've ever read. And he very complimentary of the hospital, and I think just really asked the right voters questions of, you know, uh, we just want more, more evidence that the, that the tax increase is warranted. And, uh, that's great information for me. We'll do a solid job of communicating the importance of the expansion as well as the need to add surgical services to this end of Valley County.
And I think that's really important to folks to know, this is what we have, this is what we're gonna get. And that, that's, this is how much we're gonna save by offering those.
And that, that's, this is how much we're gonna save by offering those programs here, instead of you having to drive to Boise or McCall to have the same thing done. Exactly.
And I think that's pretty easy to fix.
Are you reading? Sure, sure.
So, you guys.
That's the one that Elton likes better. I, I don't have a preference between the two, so if you like the second one, I'm fine with that.
I do.
Do you want me to print this, or Doug, do you have these printed?
No, I will. Um, we did not print them off until the commissioners made a decision, so if the commissioners make a motion.
Kind of what does it mean to us to, to endorse it? I mean, what does it mean to those guys when we endorse it?
Says we're in favor of the.
We're in favor of it?
Yeah.
Do we have any, we, do we offer any supporting thing beyond being in favor of it? Well, I think it helps you if they go apply for grants. You've got letter supports behind you in your grant application, that there's other people that support this.
Yeah.
We do a lot of letter supports for grant folks, so um, this could be used for that purpose as well.
Precisely. Uh, yeah, Mr. Allen, we, uh, we are one of two, uh, hospitals in Valley County. We're both tax district hospitals.
Right.
Uh, ours serves about twenty-eight hundred square miles and a little over four thousand year-round full-time residents. Uh, that number goes way up when you consider our part-time weekend and visitors. Uh, and, uh, our, our hospital is fifty years old, and she's tired, and she needs to be modernized as well as expanded in order to serve the people we serve. And we'll continue to serve as our county grows. And so, uh, endorsement by the county commissioners, uh, I think would be helpful. Certainly for grants, as Mr. Hasbrook, uh, mentioned, uh, we'll be actively pursuing both private sector and government grants to help with this expansion, to minimize the impact that we will have on the taxpayers. Uh, but bottom line is, we'll have to have taxpayer support.
Yeah.
Uh, commissioners are well-regarded in the county, and having the commissioner's, uh, endorsement will help us in our efforts to communicate to taxpayers.
Well, I have to admit, I'm kinda like a little bit late to the game as far as what you're doing here, but you do, uh, I know that historically throughout the area, I know count, council lost their hospital many years ago. They really couldn't, couldn't stand the game. It's tough. I know that there's some challenges. It sounded like maybe even with Grangefill and some of those areas. St. Luke's has moved in as, as a fairly big player, and we're, and it's kinda interesting. We're hanging on here with two of them, actually, in Valley County.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a big county.
Yeah.
Uh, it may not have a ton of people, but we are a big county, and when it comes to time-sensitive emergencies, being able to be within, you know, twenty or thirty minutes of a hospital is really critical.
Yeah.
Depends on which moment in time you say when we're not a big county.
So, that's true. Yeah, we are growing. We are growing.
Yeah, and then, and of course, St. Luke's has grown tremendously in the McCall area, and they've actually, they have satellite offices, too, I believe.
They do, yes, in Riggins and New Meadows.
So, yeah, then obviously, the question might come to some taxpayers is why, and that, you know, we work together the same way with Cascade.
Sure, sure. Actually, we work, uh, very well with St. Luke's McCall and the St. Luke's system. We also have affiliation with St. Alphonsus, University of Utah. Um, and we depend upon those big players to help us deliver what we deliver.
Right.
But at the same time, we are able, because we're independent, to be laser-focused on the needs of the people in our tax district. We don't get our decisions made anywhere else, and our elected Board of Trustees makes their decisions on what's best only for the people in this tax district. So, so for that reason, I mean, there's pros and cons to being independent and small.
Right.
But there's, so there's pros and cons. And, and, and at this point, certainly the direction of the trustees and from surveys that we've conducted of our citizens to remain independent if possible.
Okay, everybody good? I'd entertain a motion to approve the second letter, which is the bigger one. And we'll print it out on County Litterhead and sign it, and then get it to you guys sometime this week, if that'll work for you.
Yes.
If we can get it approved. Have a motion.
I move to approve the letter of support for the Cascade Medical Center, which was the second template that we received.
I'll probably help make that motion, but.
Oh, he just asking for a motion?
Okay, I'll second that, thank you. Who did second it? Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, if I may approach the bench, I do have, uh, warm-off-the-press annual reports for Cascade Medical Center, which you might find to be fascinating reading in your spare time.
Okay. This is, uh, this is kinda, does this take the place of, uh, the sleeping stuff?
Sure, yes.
Hey. Yeah, this is late-night reading.
There's lots of pictures, too.
Yeah, late night. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, guys. Have a good year.
Okay, now, at this time, we're going to, uh, recess as the Valley County Commissioners and reconvene as the EMS Board. And we need to set the fiscal year twenty-three EMS budget hearing, and I'm assuming we're gonna do that on August twenty-ninth at probably, what, two o'clock?
That's what we would recommend.
August twenty-ninth at two o'clock. Is that good with everybody? What are we doing? Basically, I'm getting, getting ahead of you here. What, I'm sorry. We're reconvening as the EMS Board to set a budget hearing, annual budget hearing, and we do it the same day we do the counties. Do the counties at one, then we'll do the EMS budget at two. Okay. Does that work? I need a motion to do that. What motion we do that, sir? Okay, so it's August twenty-ninth at two P M. August twenty-ninth at two P M. And you seconded it?